This meeting of Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please remain standing? Over the past couple of weeks, the South has been pummeled with a couple of hurricanes and they've had loss of life and loss of property. So if we could just take a moment of silence for those who not only lost their lives but lost property and if we just have a moment of silence for those who weathered both Harvey and Irma. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal, here. Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Stickley.
Here.
Mr. Blair.
Here.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sancker.
Here.
Mr. Mumford.
Here.
All members are present. We have no request to amend the agenda. We'll move on to minutes of the August 22, 2017 meeting. They were distributed by email. Mr. Clark.
To approve the minutes as of Brad.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have a request to address council, but it's not on agenda items, so we will deal with those a little later on. We have no reports of standing committees or second and third reading of ordinances. Our next item on the agenda is introductory readings of ordinances, and these have to do with property tax payments on some properties that we acquired through the Pay Corps Development Project. I had discussions with the state fiscal advisor, April Davis, today, yesterday and today. We both agreed that any entering into contracts does require approval by the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission. And also, the funding for the payment of these taxes is not currently included in the financial recovery plan. So in discussions with the law department, we, I also checked with Jim Stiff, there is not extra money, there was not extra money in the financial recovery plan to even make the first payments because these were not negotiated at the time. And so I believe that from now on, we've talked about anything that has to do with finances should go through the financial advisor, April Davis, and/or Anna Mary to make sure that it's okay for council to act on it without making any changes to the financial recovery plan. My understanding is that both these payments and the payments of the authorization of claims that we approved will both need to be amended in the financial recovery plan. So my suggestion is that we refer these to the finance committee and that we look at amending that financial recovery plan to include all of these things at once. And if there's anything else on the horizon that we know of that might not be already in the plan, that we amend the plan to include those items, have it on the agenda at the next council meeting, which will be the 26th. And the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission meets on the 28th. They could then approve the new plan and could come back to council at the next meeting for passage. So I know it's cumbersome, but with being under fiscal emergency, that seems to be the plan, that seems to be the way that things are going to have to move if they are not currently in the financial recovery plan. Mr. Sancker.
Question through the chair to the law director. I believe there's a, the date that was set in here was September 21st. And if that date isn't met, that this negotiated, the terms of this negotiated payment plan go by the wayside.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. That is my understanding as we stand right now. We're going to throw our, that was the, when I first got the notice from the state, I said, "Well, this may take a little while. We may not have the money right now. We may need to do some paperwork." And her reply was by the 21st. And so we'll throw ourselves on the mercy of the state, you know, for what that's worth. And maybe we'll get an extension. The other side of this is that tax abatements are theoretically retroactive for three years. And so if we do an agreement, even if it's after the 21st, and make the payment and get the certificate from the treasurer, we could file new tax abatement applications. And very least, that would start to cut off the future going forward. But at least that would get us in a position to get that much farther along to get these tax abatements in place. And could theoretically go back three years. Although, I'll tell you, the stuff it says in the statutes and the regulations, I didn't expect this to take 18 months. There was nothing about doing an agreement to pay this out. There was no requirement. So it's, you know, it kind of depends on how they deal with the paperwork, but that could still be a possibility that we would set this up and have 2014 refunded to us if we filed the applications in 2017.
So I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I don't know if, Mr. Sancker, I don't know if you've got any correspondence back from about, I know you had, at the last meeting, said that you had sent a letter to the commission asking about the process. So I think if they hadn't responded, my guess is that everything should go from finance committee and myself to April Davis and Anna Mary. And then they can let us know whether we can act on it or not, or if the plan needs to be amended. And like I said, I don't know if there's anything else on the horizon that we may want to include in that. If you are aware, finance committee is aware of any other things that might be coming up. We may want to include everything in the amendment at the next council meeting. Mr. Sancker.
We did send a letter. They did, she did send a note back, an email back, saying that as far as us, council change in our appropriations, and I can forward it to everybody else, the email, but that anything that finance or council wants to change that's outside the plan would need to go to them first.
Right.
So, you know, so anything in the future, but it didn't sound like they were willing to make any changes anyway, so.
So I know April Davis is more than willing to assist us with that. In my conversations with her, they're, both she and Anna Mary are more than happy to, you know, to help us with that. Did you have comment?
Yes, I would like to make a motion out of the movie, the agenda, to give the finance committee.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no introductory readings of resolutions or administration reports, so we do have two requests to address council. The first is Virginia Wallace. Could you come forward and give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address council?
I live at 1766 Williams Avenue, Norwood, Ohio. And I don't know that I've brought this question to the right place for one. Last council meeting, you guys approved what had been changed with the state as far as putting the money into the C-9 trust for it to be mailed, what they had sent in so far. And my question is, how long does it take this process? And where, how many departments is it going through before the checks go out of here? I don't know if finance committee would have that information, or if I'm steering in the wrong direction and need to go to the auditor's office, which...
Usually, I would think that the process would be, once that's passed, that either the department head or Mr. Gears, probably Mr. Gears since their office administers that, would prepare a requisition. And then that gets sent to the auditor's office, who has to then generate a purchase order, and then goes back to Mr. Gears to sign, and then it goes back to the auditor's office. They cut the check, and then that has to go to the treasurer's office for signature, and then mailed out. That would be, as far as I know, that would be the process. Mr. Sancker, do you have anything other than that?
I don't recall that we really voted on anything at the...
It was just a change in appropriations.
It was a change in appropriations.
Yeah, because everything had a balance.
After the state.
But as far as handling, but as far as handling paperwork to, between the different groups that actually match them up and make the payment, issue the checks, that is handled like through, you know, like the auditor or treasurer's office there. Once we make any change of that, we really don't see, you know, who's getting paid, how much is getting paid, where it's getting paid.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that because you guys don't see any of that.
Oh, no. Mr. Gears is the...
From what I understand, everybody here really sees the names, other than maybe upstairs.
I think Mr. Gears is the one who hits the bill. The mayor's office and Mr. Gears are the ones that get the votes.
I have people who call me and ask me about it, just because I've come up here and spoke about it before, so.
Yes, Mr. Sancker.
But I, from what I do recall here, and say that they had processed everything that they had on file at the time. So how long it takes after this been processed, or where it goes, you know, that I don't know. But I, if they had stuff in to be processed, it should have been processed, at least from what they said at the last meeting, though.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I've been working on this for quite a while, and I have been talking to a lot of people about this. And our city is well aware that I have been told, and I personally, people have not been paid for '16 and '17. I have brought this up several times. I finally got the hold of the head of AEBS. I got a lot of conflicting information from him. He went to check things out. He called me back and said, "I won't talk to you." Everything you need, Joe Gears has. He has every bit of paperwork. I would have to go to Joe Gears for this. I have gotten, you know, tons of calls about this, "When am I going to get paid?" I know it says, I know, you know, when we did all of this, they said we were paid up. I'm well aware we're not. The city is. I mean, the city knows your claims that you're not paid either. They're well aware that the retirees are saying they haven't been paid. However, AEBBS originally said we were all paid up.
Well, they sent me a letter in July saying that I had like $612 for 2016 that I couldn't be paid for. I'd already been paid through 2016, which is incorrect. I have got nothing for 2016. And I did call them and tell them that. And they said, "Well, I guess we sent the letters out too quick." Because I guess they were expecting things to come, as far as, you know, the premiums had been turned in and everything, so.
My suggestion is to Joe Gears, because they won't speak to me. They said we have to go through our own administrator, which is Joe Gears. He has everything.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Moore?
The one, if the idea is that council change appropriations to add is like $450,000 or something to that key, and one of the reasons, it's possible anyway, that one of the reasons that checks have not gone out to recipients is that I don't know if the city was in a position to write a $450,000 check over the last couple of weeks. So that may be, I don't know if the city's issued the check out to the trust to issue those to AEBS.
Well, that's the millennium plan you're talking about. More money goes into that plan than goes into the actual C-9. Because the C-9 is where they just get the $2250 a year, braced on premium and prescriptions. Once you exceed that, then you don't get anymore. But what you're talking about is the millennium, and it's my understanding that is paid up. They just sent checks out on the 5th.
Right, but I mean, if it's the C-9 reversed, but that's what was changed in the appropriations the last time around.
Right.
And that's a big check. And I don't, if that's a big chunk of money, I don't know if the city's issued that check. That may be one of the places where the money can't go out if that doesn't go through, so I don't know.
Okay. I didn't think it was that much, but anyway. And then I just have one other comment. It bothers me that there's been comments made about how overpaid our police and firemen are. And I want to tell you something. I was married to a firefighter, who's now deceased, died from lung cancer. We have got one of the best services around here as far as police and fire. And I think if you ever need one of them, you're going to understand that. I mean, to say that they're so overpaid is wrong. I mean, I used to sit and think that before my husband ever got on. Once he got on and was in a couple fires and come home, and, you know, one time he fell through a floor, another time, you know, they earn their pay, the same as the police. And it bothers me that there's people out on the street making comments about how grossly overpaid they are. And I know that, you know, doesn't, I hope, come from our council people. I know some of them that I know it wouldn't come from. But just keep your ears open, and if you hear it, I think you should defend them.
Thank you. Sorry, I forgot to... We had the conversation back and forth. That was our time, not yours. Thank you. And next, we have Angela Pansella. Again, if you'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
My name's Angela Pansella, 4409 Franklin Avenue. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, members of council. I am here representing what used to be called the Norwood Drug and Alcohol Abuse Prevention Coalition. That does not become a nice acronym, so we changed our name recently to ASAC Norwood, which stands for Activating Substance Abuse Prevention. Our goal is to promote and activate a drug-free Norwood. We do that through prevention education, through valuing the voice of youth, through promoting and encouraging youth activities in safe recreational spaces. All of those are activities that promote health in general. So holistic approaches to prevention are the way we go about our work. And we go about our work through coalition activities. So we have representatives on our coalition from city government, from the police, from faith-based organizations, from the health department, from nonprofit organizations, and engaged citizens. Recently, we had the notion that since the council elections are coming up, and school board elections are coming up, it would, we would like to extend an invitation to anyone who is running to be part of a forum specifically talking about prevention activities. We find that prevention is a concept that is easy to wrap your head around intuitively when you think about an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. There's certainly been plenty of opportunities for us to see how it takes a lot once someone has fallen into a situation of addiction, to provide the treatment and recovery services to help. We are certainly in favor of treatment and recovery. We are also very much, though, focusing our attention on the prevention side. What sort of activities help people from getting into these situations in the first place? So we are hosting a candidate's forum on prevention on Thursday, October 5th, at 7:00 PM. It will be held at the community center on Courtland and Carter. And I wanted to come to extend the invitation expressly to anyone here. It will be open to the public. I wanted to get the word out to council members and school board candidates first, and then tomorrow, if my computer is working well, it will go out into the general body of the city. And that was my comment. So thank you very much.
Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. And yeah, thank you, Angela, for being here and for announcing that name. And I know you've done a lot of great work for the community. And so I know that there was a, you all were looking for members or community partners in the past, and I even brought this up at a council meeting, maybe a couple of months ago, about that. And so Joe Sancker, John Mumford, and I, on behalf of the entire city council, wanted to kind of sign us up. So definitely appreciate your all's support, and really appreciate everything you do in the communities.
I deeply appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I will leave the information that we have. We put together some information about prevention. And we also brought Prevention First booklet, which is all about how to speak with children about drugs at any age. Some folks may feel like, "Oh, my kid is too young. I don't want to give them any ideas." But this is an age-appropriate, they have in different age groups what the conversation could look like. So I will, may I give those to you?
Sure. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Mr. Blair?
Yes. Last night, I had a meeting with Marilyn Hanahan and seven others. I'd like to thank everyone that came to the meeting last night. We met with several Xavier officials, along with a few residents. Chief Milik of Xavier Police Department, their chief of student affairs, their assistant director of student integrity, Cindy Steiby, their assistant director of resident life, our own Sergeant Dave Lewis, Chief Kramer, Marilyn, I, and resident Mickey Williams. Last night, we got to talk about something that's been increasingly getting worse over the past few years, is some of the Xavier parties and how they're leaving out garbage, you know, not treating their neighbors correctly, not really giving people the quality of life they deserve. So we met with these officials, and now moving forward, we're working on a plan to get control of the nuisance housing, the repeat offenders, and also the landlords that have allowed these parties to get to the point of where there was one that happened Saturday with 300 people in a backyard, not a big backyard, a small backyard, and we had six police officers with these 300 people. So that is definitely, what we would all agree, is out of control. So the assistant director of student integrity and Chief Milik had assured us that from now forward, and we're going to be having a few more meetings here soon, that we're going to work on getting this under control, to make sure that our residents, the people that have lived here, get a better quality of life that they deserve. So I think we're stepping in the right direction, and it was honestly a really good meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Bonzal.
Madam President. So I just kind of wanted to quickly address just some media reports today, unfortunate ones in my opinion, that seem to come up every couple of years, or even every year. Somehow, the media gets infatuated with this idea of Norwood joining Cincinnati. And today, this article, or the articles were about this conservative think tank that was detailing how entering suburbs that are, quote, "losing population" and seeing a declining median household income should fold into their metropolitan area's namesake city. So in our case, the city of Cincinnati. And there's many issues with that. For one, the data they use is 2000 to 2010, so they're just comparing the two census years. When, you know, we're in a much different city seven years from 2000, where then. The second part of it is that, you know, this study doesn't tell the whole story. This, you know, the media wants to put out there that we're losing population, but that's been planned, and that's actually a great thing, because we're turning a lot of these duplexes and three families into single-family houses, which in my opinion is just extremely exciting. So it also talks about how we, so in addition, though, if something like that were to ever happen, we would lose level of control of our police and fire departments, and that would be an absolute failure. So our residents can be assured, and I hear all the time from our residents how great our police department is, but we have six officers on the streets at all hours of the day for just our three-square-mile area, when Cincinnati does not have the same comparable coverage, and we might be losing coverage going to Cincinnati. And then for our fire department, we've got two medic units for 20,000 residents, and Cincinnati, I think, has 15 or so for 300,000 residents. And I feel a lot safer being here in Norwood, knowing that there's always, there are two medic units that close, than what if half those medic units in Cincinnati are tied up, and they might be, the only open ones might be on the west side, and I might be here. And so it's just, you know, it's kind of a scary situation. So, you know, while there might be some neighborhoods that might benefit, you know, the ones closest to Rookwood, for the most part, it would just be a negative, negative thing for the city of Norwood. Many residents thankfully have an automatic heck no reaction anytime they hear this. And I think we'd see a lot of residents leave if something like that ever happened, Madam President. So I just want to propose and just reassure residents out there that this council, there's never been any conversations like that. Everything is full steam ahead, city of Norwood. I mean, these articles, these things are just out there. They scare people. But anything like that that would ever happen would have to be a ballot initiative, and, you know, if I were a betting person, I'd say that that thing would fail, you know, 80/20. So thankfully, we are strong enough to exist on our own. I'm personally against annexation, and I know that the rest of our council is as well. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Mr. Sancker.
Just a follow-up on that, like Mr. Bonzal was saying, a conservative think tank, but I'd lay odds that there wasn't a resident of Norwood and/or Elmwood Place who were listed on this thing that were invited to be part of this conservative think tank. It's kind of leveraged on one side, you know, and there was never anybody from the other side that's there to give an opinion or to strengthen the position of the cities that are being discussed, so take it for what it's worth.
My comment on that was, they also mentioned, let's see, Elmwood Place, Norwood, Redding, Indian Hill, and my comment was, "Well, when Indian Hill becomes part of Cincinnati, then you come and talk to me." Because that's never going to happen, and it's not going to happen in Norwood either. And, you know, what does somebody from Manhattan know about local, you know, all government is local, and so you get things done locally. So I agree, Mr. Sancker. Thank you. Is there any other new business? Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. If it's okay, if I just want to quickly follow up on that, too. And the mayor had some great comments, I guess, in the Cincinnati Inquirer, and he basically, you know, said that this think tank needs to go think about something else, and, you know, I agree with him, and I applaud that.
That's pretty good.
I think that was fantastic. So I just want to thank the mayor for that.
Any other new business? Mr. Sancker.
Just briefly, we kind of touched upon the state auditors as our overseeing committee, and they had met, just update, they had met with the various department heads yesterday to discuss together their potential budget for their department for the upcoming year. And so they met with virtually every department head yesterday to discuss, you know, certain procedures, what they could, should be doing, and what they should look for to put into theirs for this upcoming year. And they are supposed to have those completed by, I believe, the 15th by the plan, and then we will begin meeting with finance, along with, I guess, a couple of other things, to start formulating the appropriations for 2018. So just an update that that was taking place this week, so FYI.
Thank you, Mr. Sancker. Mr. Mumford.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that the local establishment, the Mound Cafe, has changed hands, and I want to thank the previous owners, DeeDee and Joe Redkers. They've had it for about 10 years, and they've, they've kept a place going that was needed, and a local watering hole with good food. And two ladies now have taken charge of it. Sheila Cox, who used to work at Quatman Cafe, and Julie Peter, who used to work at Quatman Cafe, have taken over the place. And I went Friday night for their first soft opening, and you couldn't hardly even And I went Friday night for their first soft opening, and you couldn't hardly even get in the door, so...
It was crowded Saturday.
Yes. So it's, it's just nice to see that something continues that works, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Mumford. Mr. Blair?
I did also forget earlier, I meant to bring this up to you, Madam President. But over Labor Day weekend, we did lose a very good, or resident, Red Tackett. He had constantly and consistently volunteered and was very involved with our schools and community at supporting our kids, whether it was helping out at the stadium or helping with doing simple things at the park. I know that he helped at Grace Church, and he'd just done a few other things. He was a simple, laid-back fellow, and would we mind having a moment of silence for him?
Not at all. Mr. Tackett?
Yeah, Mr. Red Tackett.
Red Tackett. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Is there any other new business? Two things. I went to a meeting today that, and I found out information that I think would be very helpful for our residents. It was a We Thrive Committee meeting at Hamilton County Public Health, Cincinnati Children's. What we do in our Injury Prevention Center presented to these folks, but also people working cooperatively were there. And they have a, something called Pre-Payer Affair that's held each November. And so on November the 11th, there will be 200-plus volunteers available to rake leaves in communities, clean out gutters, and install smoke detectors. So that's one thing, that if residents need any assistance with that, they can contact people working cooperatively. And the other thing that was really exciting is that they have gotten some additional money and some grants this year for weatherization projects. So they really would like to spend this money on weatherization of homes. And so if people need help with either of those projects, they can contact people working cooperatively at 351-7921. They also, I'll leave a packet in the clerk's office. They also have a list, they have a waiting list of people who need projects done in their home, and they have a list that, he's supposed to get me the specific information for Norwood, but they try to concentrate, they have some additional funding through the Veterans Administration as well, so veterans can have some additional work done if they don't meet some financial requirements. So again, if you contact people working cooperatively, those are just a couple of programs that I think might be very beneficial to the folks in our community. And if you don't meet the financial requirements, they can put you in touch with other agencies that might be able to help you. And the second thing is that I got an email regarding our Community Development Block grants. That's a three-year funding cycle, and that cycle, again, starts in 2018. And so we do have to have public hearings on how, what the community wants us to spend that money on, and then we have to come up with how we, a plan of how we are going to make that ask of the county. And so we have to have two public hearings. I would suggest that we do one on October the 10th and one on October the 24th. Those are the two meetings in October. We don't have to advertise. It'll be taken care of for us. Once we set the dates, we just have to let them know. So traditionally, in the past, we have done things like street resurfacing, the tree board, streetscapes, and playgrounds, playground equipment, and the dental program for the Health Department. So those are usually the five things that we ask for. There are limited things that we can ask for, and I will get all of that information and have that passed out to you prior to the October 10th meeting. So just, if it's okay with you, we'll set those dates. Thank you. So any other new business? All right, we'll move on to communications. The first is a letter from Jim Stith regarding estimated revenue projections for 2017 to 2022.
Dear Mayor Williams, attached is a copy of the Norwood Auditor's estimated revenue projections with rolling five-year forecast as required by the Fiscal Emergency Plan. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to call. Sincerely, Jim Stith, Auditor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Clark?
I'm going to receive and file the letter and report.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion?
No.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonsell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumford?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding Mayor's Court Fines for August 2017.
Dear Madam President and members of council, enclosed, please sign a report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of August 2017. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Sankar?
I recommend that the letter and report be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonsell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumford?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Chuck Barlow regarding rescinding objection to the liquor license transfer request regarding lateral sports bar.
To whom it may concern, Buckskin Partners LLC has brought its tax account up to date. Therefore, the earnings tax department no longer objects to the proposed liquor license transfer. Chuck Barlow, Tax Commissioner, City of Norwood.
Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, I would like to go through the chair and ask the law director just a quick question on this.
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore, if, do we need to rescind our objection, or will, if nobody shows up at the, I mean, we requested a hearing, but do we need to send a letter to the State Board rescinding our objection?
I would suggest we do if we do so that they don't gear up to have a hearing and have people show up, if we, you know, let them know. So if council wants to do that, I recommend you receive and make a motion, receive and file the letter and withdraw the objection.
And forward. Do you want us to forward it to the...
Forward it.
Yes. Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, I would recommend that we receive and file the letter and also send a letter to the State Liquor Board rescinding our objection, our prior objection to Buckskin Partners LLC.
Seconded by Mr. Mumford. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonsell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumford?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Chuck Barlow, Tax Commissioner, regarding the earnings tax report for August 2017.
To Norwood City Council, attached is a monthly report for August 2017 indicating collections in the amount of $1,117,919.84. This reflects an average year-to-date increase of 12.98% over 2016. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Chuck Barlow, Tax Commissioner.
Mr. Clark?
I'm going to receive and file the report.
Seconded by Mr. Bonsell. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonsell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Mumford?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no absent members. Mr. Mumford?
I move adjourned.
Seconded by Mrs. Stickley. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonsell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumford?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.